Ok, test, test, test. Just waiting for... The one voice. Ok, done. It's working. Um, alright everyone. Now it's time to study. And... Just need to study. And what I need to do? I have shown it now. I want that. See? Now it's better. Basic items. Ok. Um... As you can see here, I open up, um, the page. I continue where I stopped. Stop it. Let me see. Open to you. Notion. Well, the last study, we finished the reading of overview. Now, I'm going to start the reading of fundamentals. Let's see if we finish this today. Change. Now, get started. Remembering, uh, these study sessions, um, there will be times when I need to do some tutorials. Tutorials. And when I do tutorials, I'll, um, I'll do the same. Um, as any other. Anyways, um, most of this part I will be in the next many, many, um... Oh boy. The next many times I will be reading all of this, um, stuff. I need to read all of this. I know there are people who would, um, a counsel. I don't know if you should use the word counsel. A counsel. Advice, of course. That would advise, uh, to try to make things more practical. And after you go to reading, to go things in depth. More in depth than knowledge. But I am another type of person. I first read much about this stuff. And after I try to practice myself, so I force to remember things that I read. I know that most of what I read, I will forget after time. Which is why I come back to reading again. The first reading is to create some, the most basic connections with the terms that, the text that I read. So I'm be finishing all of this. And after I will try to make an app by myself. So, first thing first. Um, yeah, I started with XAML. I know that there is a version 10, but I will be 9 until the 10th is finished. And because the place where I work, we are in Maui 9. So I will wait till they go to the 10. I believe the 10, it's the new LDS version. Which I would really like to be in this version in the near future. But anyways, get started with XAML. In a .NET multi-platform app, in a .NET multi-platform app UI, .NET MoE app, XAML is mostly used to define the visual content of the page. Works together with a C# code behind. It's mostly used to define visual contents of a page and works together with C# code behind. The code behind file provides code support for the markup. Together these two files contribute to a new class definition that includes child views and property initialization. Within the XAML file, classes and properties are referenced with XML elements. And attributes and links between the markup and code are established. Uh, just to make sure, uh, to make understandable. Not just the Maui, but the XAML markup language. As I said in the last video, just remember. Um, they are good to make more visible, more easy to, like draw the view. The screen that you want to draw. It's more easy to do that with the XAML. But behind the scenes, when the code is compiled, the markup language stuff that you write will be transformed in C# code. Remember that you don't need XAML. XAML or any markup language to create, uh, C# not pages, views, screens. You can do this with the classes that are used, the same classes that are used in the markup language. You can do that by yourself. But it is more difficult to make maintenance. Because you need to read much more code. And it's not more easily to read than in the markup language that works similar to web pages, um, program. Anyhow, continue. The anatomy of a XAML file. Uh, a, a new .NET MoE app contains three XAML files and they are associated code behind files. The AppXAML and its code behind, code. And AppShell and main page XAML. Um, besides App and main page, um, AppShell never existed before. When I first learned XAML, there was no AppShell. That is something that probably will learn about more in, yeah, in some part, here, probably here. That's something different from the XAML. But remember, .NET Maui and other C# bases markup languages, uh, most of them use XAML below the markup language. So, for instance, there is another markup language that's called Avalonia. I have to use in my work. Avalonia, as far as I know, they use XAML in the same way Maui uses XAML. And they transform the markup language, the XAML markup language. Um, not the XAML. Uh, XAML is not a markup language. So, they transform the XAML markup language and use, um, modify version of them, of XAML markup language. Uh, as Maui is for, as Maui, .NET Maui, it's from Microsoft which created XAML. I don't know if they created or they just bought the company that created XAML. But XAML is practically proprietary from Microsoft. The few, what I believe it is, I believe they are the owner of XAML, the markup language. So you don't need to learn a new language in Maui. You just need to use the same XAML from XAML. Okay? This is new stuff for me, the AppShell. I have already worked before with XAML. Before XAML was closed and its support was finished. The first file, the first file pairing is App. It's the main part here. The drawing of the screen begins here. Begins in this code here. AppXAML.c. The first file pairing is AppXAML. And a XAML file and AppXAML.C. A C# code behind file associated with the XAML file. Both AppXAML and AppXAML.C contributes to a class named App that derives from Application. The second file pairing is AppShell and AppShellXAML.C which contributes to a class named AppShell that derives from Shell, which we are going to learn in the future. Most other classes with XAML files contribute to a class that derives from ContentPage. ContentPage is, um, it's a template that, it's like a blank page that you can create everything from zero. There are other types of page which have already, few things already created. ContentPage normally it's empty. It's where you begin things. Most other classes with XAML files contribute to a class that derives from ContentPage. And define the user interface of a page. This is true of the main page XAML and main page XAML.c files. This main page, it's like any other view that you can create yourself. Can be, um, you know, Marcus.XAML and Mary.XAML. Can be yourcompany.XAML. You can get any name. That's the first page that is shown. Normally, you write, you call this page inside in AppXAML. But I think that maybe AppShell is making this control part. As far as I know. The main page XAML file has the following structure. Um, XML namespace, XML namespace X, X-class MyMauiAppMainPage. I don't say explain this because it is going to be explained here. The two XML namespace declarations refer to user URI, unique reference, unique, unique reference identifier. It's not URL, it's URI. Unique reference identification. The two XML namespace declarations refer to unique reference identity on Microsoft. However, there is no content at these URIs. And they basically function as version identifiers. The first XAML namespace declaration. The first... The first XAML namespace declaration means that tags, first namespace declaration means that tags defined. The first, the first namespace. The first XAML namespace declaration. First XAML namespace. Oh boy. The first XAML namespace declaration. Sorry, I got me a little lost. The first XAML namespace declaration means that tags defined within the XAML file with no prefix refer to classes in .NET Maui. For example, ContentPage. It's referring to this part. This part, XML namespace, this. Referent to Maui reference. The second namespace declaration defines a prefix of X. This is used for several elements and attributes that are increasing to XAML itself and which are supported by other implementations of XAML. It's referring here. This X works like a alias. And, as far as I know, in XAML markup language, you cannot have, you must have the first XAML namespace reference. It needs to have the first reference. Before Maui was XAML. This is the first reference that makes possible to use. Remember, this is a markup language. Every, everything here is going to be substituted in a C# classes and code that will be used by the program. So why the first reference is XAML or Maui? It's because the classes that will be called here, this part below the ContentPage space, are the classes that are defined here. You don't need XAML, remember. You don't need a markup language to draw the, to draw the screen. But it's much, much more difficult and difficult to make maintenance of this. I'm explaining this because most of people doesn't explain this thing. Because they think it is too obvious. Remember, all of this is fake code. This is not code, it's a markup language that will be substituted by real code, which is real code, C#. Which increase XAML itself and which are supported by other implementations of XAML. In this, when you use the alias X, you call the classes of XAML. As we call here, Maui classes to use to draw the screen. The, when we call X, we use classes or at least functions or variables, anything that comes from this reference that is XAML. However, these elements and attributes are slightly different depending on the year embedded in the URI. .NET Maui supports the 2009 XAML specification. That's something important to notice. Uh, I don't know, I never used anything different from the 2009 XAML. But that's something to be watching when you make a program. Because if this get, if this date, this year is changed, changed, this could affect the, um, what's the name in English? There are classes that are expecting specific things here. From here. And when there are things different here, things here do not work well. Not work well. There is not necessarily everything falls down. Fall, falls down. Fall, falls down. This lives. Speaking these lives will make my English better. That's the main point, one of the main points of doing this. At the end of the first tag, the X prefix, this one, is used, at the end of the first tag, the X prefix is used for an attribute named class. Ah, now he's referring this. So in the alias X, I'm calling something called class. Remember, this ContentPage is a class. So you need to tell the, you need to tell, not XAML, you need to tell Maui, this is a class. Why? Why is that? Because it has the type class. So I'm saying this, this stuff, it's a class. And that's its name. Probably this is the rest of the reference of the item, of this class. So this is a class that, this is a class whom, who inherited, inherited the ContentPage class. So this class inherited the ContentPage class. Okay? And, uh, its name, its main page. This is the rest of the reference to this class. At the end of the first tag, X prefix is used for an attribute named class. Because of, because of the use of this X, because of, because the use of this X prefix is virtually universal for the XAML namespace, which I agree, I never use nothing different. XAML attributes such as class are almost always referred to as X-class. The X-class attribute specifies a fully qualified dot net class name. Why fully qualified? This is the reference of the rest to get to this class. Probably MyMauiApp is the name of the solution. And this first page, it's near the solution file. The X-class attribute specifies a fully qualified dot net class name. The main page class, the main page class in the Maui namespace. And, MyMauiApp, it's at the same time the namespace and probably, much probably, the name of the solution. Much probably. When you create, when you create your app, the name you give to this, to the project, this app, it's the same name of the solution and the same name of the namespace. But you can change the namespace if you like. This means that this XAML file defines a new class named MainPage in the MyMaui namespace that derives from ContentPage. Yes. The tag, the tag in which the X-class attribute appears. The tag, the tag in which, derives from ContentPage. The tag in which the X-class attribute appears. The X-class attribute can only appear in the root element of XAML file. The root is the last part. You see, when you create a view, the part that, um, englobes, encompass, encomp... encompasses, okay? The, the code that encompasses everything, it's where, it's the root part. Remember, ContentPage is a class. Although the class here, it's Maui. It's main page. Main page whom derives from ContentPage. Inherit the things from ContentPage. So this is the definition of the class. This is the root part which defines this class, which will have many classes inside it. The X-class attribute can only appear in the root element of XAML file to define. The X-class attribute can only appear in the root element of a XAML file to define a derived C# class. This is the only, this is the only new class defined in XAML file. First class, ContentPage. A ContentPage named MainPage. Class MainPage which derives from ContentPage. The X-class attribute can only appear in the root element of XAML file to define a derived C# class. This is the only new class defined in XAML file. Everything else that appears in XAML file is instead simply instantiated from existing classes and initialized it. The main page XAML.CS file looks like, looks similar to this. NameSpace, public partial class MainPage, ContentPage. Public MainPage, initialized component. Just you know, the namespace is a way that makes things more easily found by the compiler. I believe it's the compiler that finds the... This is the class, ClassMainPage. ClassMainPage. How do I find the ClassMainPage inside our solution, our project? Use the namespace. The namespace is associated with, unique reference identification. It's through a path inside the file, in the system where this code is being developed. Partial. Partial is, um, something else that it is, public accessibility. It's how easy, uh, easy. Public it makes possible other classes see and interact with these classes inside its code. Partial makes this class, you can create more files with the same class. I don't spend much time explaining what's partial. But it's a way you divide a class between many, 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 um, files throughout the system. This is something more advanced. This is something more advanced, I will that after. This is the constructor, which is public, and this initialized component, it's something that comes from, guess who, guess who, from content page. I don't know if it's from content page inherits. This method makes everything that was written here and between the, these two tags, these, these two tags, everything that's written here, it's initialized or instantiated after this, uh, this method, it's executed, executed. Remember, all of this will end up becoming this C sharp code. The main page class derives, just a moment. The main page class derives from content page, which I said before, and it's a partial class definition. That's all a way to separate the definition of the class between many, many files. When Visual Studio builds a project, a source generator generates new C sharp code, source, new C sharp source that contains the definition of the initialized component method that is called from main page constructor and adds each to the compilation object. At runtime, code, code in the Maui program, at runtime code in the Maui program class bootstraps the app and executes the app class, the app class constructor, which instantiates a APP shell. The APP shell class instantiates the first page of the app to be displayed, which is main page. The main page constructor calls initialized component. Just we, we don't, just to we don't lose ourselves. The only important part is C sharp code. This is markup language, markup language, markup language. This will be transformed in some codes to be added to C sharp code. This is some, uh, some code that will be transforming in C sharp code. This is a markup language that will be transformed in C sharp code. Always remember that, that's the important stuff. This is the first class to be called when you begin the, the app to work on. Look, solution Maui app one, I didn't even see, and I know the namespace, it's the same name of the solution. Why? When you create in Visual Studio or in any other way, they have the tendency to put the name of the project, the name, the name of the project, this is the project name, is the same name of the solution as is the same name of the namespace. This class APP is the first to be called. When you call this class, this class creates, instantiated, instantiate, instantiate the APP shell. When this APP shell is instantiated, it instantiates the, the main page, not, not necessarily the main page, but any page that you put in, in its constructor to be created. In the future, you'll begin to talk about navigation. Cool, I lost myself. Ah, here. So remember, at runtime, code in the Maui program class, here. This call this. Maui class bootstraps the app and executes the app class. This call that, call that, and ends calling that. At runtime, code in Maui program class bootstrap the app and executes the app class constructor, which instantiates APP shell, another class. The APP shell class instantiates, instantiates the first page of the app to be displayed, which is main page, or any page that you created. The main page constructor calls initialized component, which utilizes all the objects defined in the XAML file. Everything, everything inside, between, everything between these two tags. Everything between these two tags is going to be initialized or instantiated. Which initialize all the objects defined in XAML file, connects them all together in parent-child relationship, attaches event handlers defined in code to events set, set in the XAML file, and sets the resultant tree of objects as a content of the page. The APP shell class uses .NET Maui shell to set the first page of the app to be displayed. However, shell is beyond the scope of this introduction to XAML. For more information, see .NET Maui shell. Where are we? Guess what? Oh, look here, the same place I said, I said that we will be in the future. One set page, so we are in the set page content. Set page content, a content page, set page content. A content page should contain a single child. Single child. That can, single child, that can be a view or a layout with child views. Remember people, these two tags defines a class, and between them, there are things, uh, stuff that will be instantiated. What is this? It's a, a class named label. This is a class named label. You'll see, um, in, up here about this, but remember, all of these are in the end Maui classes, Maui classes. We are just writing in markup language, which more, is more readable. Content page should contain, contain a single child that can be a view or a layout with child views. Label, it's a child from content page. Label, it's inside the class content page, sorry. No, not necessarily, uh, no, yes. Label, it's a child class that is inside, um, hello XAML page. Hello XAML page, it's the, the truly name of the class, the class is hello XAML page. Inside this class is a class, it's a label class. Single child, it can be a view or layout child. The child of the content page is automatically set as the value of the content page, content page content property. The following example shows the content, shows a content page containing label. From, from the example above, the relationship between classes, properties, and XAML should be evident. Not so much. This is, this is a class, forget about this, this part of the code, of the markup language. This is the class, which class? Label, that's name of class. All of this are properties. It's, this is their names. Their types, I don't know, you need to open the class to see which are the types inside text, vertical options, and etc., etc. This is the content that is being put inside these properties. All of this is written in, in strings, but there are, there are, uh, some properties that their types are en- enumerable, enumerable items. So sometimes, there are code behind, that makes, um, behind the scenes, the translation from this string to a, uh, an enum value, an enum value. Let me just write down. Ennum. Wait. Here. Ennum, enum value. Let me push it to the cloud. From the example above, the relationship between classes, properties, and XAML, all of this is, is, not XAML, XML, all of this is XML. XML is, is made from XML, just, just to not forget. XAML should be evident. A .NET Maui class such as content page or label appears in XAML file as a XAML element. This is, oh, this part, to this end part, it's one element. This is here, and here are one, only one element. This is other element. The, the .NET Maui class such as content page or label appears in XAML file as an XML element. Properties of that class, including title on content page, and seven properties of label usually appears on a XAML attribute. Hey, I'm getting sleepy. Right now it's nine, nine p, nine hours and twenty, nine twenty-one PM. Many shortcuts, many shortcuts exist to set the values, many shortcuts exist to set the values of these properties. Some properties are basically data types, for example, the title and text properties are of type string and rotation is of type double. Rotation is of type double, it's not a string. The horizontal alignment property is of type text alignment, which is, which is a, guess what? Ennum. Uh, which is an enumeration. For a, for a property of any enum type, all you need to supply is a member name. For properties of more complex types, however, converters are used for parsing the XAML. Uh, these are classes in .NET Maui that derive from type converter. For example, above, several .NET Maui converters are automatically applied to convert string values to the correct type. Layout options converter. Layout options converter. Layout options converter for the, for vertical options properties. This converter converts the name of public static fields of the layout options structure to values of type layout options. Color type converter for the text color property. This converter converts the name of public static fields of the colors class or hexadecimal RGB values with or without an alpha channel. What they are saying here? These values, it's behind the scenes, changed, converted to the adequate, um, to the adequate type in C sharp when, when things got, get instantiated, okay? But remember, primal, primal types, the, for, the simplest types, which comes with the C sharp, they are do, they are make this conversion behind the scenes without the developer doing anything about this. When we are going to use other types, like other classes, other types of enumeration, etc., etc., um, we are going to make, we, we, we are going in the future to make more explicit calls to the converter class. The converter class is called behind the scenes when markup language is converted, converted to C sharp class. But there will be moments that we'll be calling the converter in this XAML code. Page navigation. When you run a .NET Maui app, the main, main page, main page is typically displayed. When you run a .NET Maui app, the main page is typically display, displayed. Okay. He's talking about the, the, he's talking about this, that, that page, that I said that would be the first page. Remember, you can create any page, any XAML page that will be the first one to be shown on the screen. You run, display, to see a different page, you can, I said to you guys, to see a different page, you can either set, set that as, as the new startup page in the APP shell XAML file, or navigate to the new page from the main page. Navigation. To implement navigation in main, main page XAML constructor, you can create a simple button, simple button, and use the event handler to navigate to hello XAML page. Navigating through, um, event handlers is something simple that should be used in case you make a really truly simple app, like a calculator, like, um, like, um, ID number generation generator, or any, anything that you, anything that you don't need many, many views, many screens to be draw. In this case, you just need to really use, um, event, event handlers to make the navigation. But in the future, we will be learning about MVVM, and in the end of all of this, we'll be talking about, uh, dependency injection and many other things. Oh, truly want to sleep. Just, just, just a minute. Hmm. Just a minute. I'm back. Sorry. Um, to implement navigation in the main page constructor, you can create a simple button and use the event handler to to Hello XAML page. To implement navigation in the main page XAML constructor, you can create a simple button and use the event handler to navigate to Hello XAML page. Well, um, remember the 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 class I said before with nothing. This is the, when you create a your first class that is a screen, a view, it's be like that. The code behind that actually, the code behind it's the class itself. This is the small part. The rest of what you write here between this is going to be put together with this class. Now, here you put inside the, this is the constructor. This is not the class, this is the constructor. Inside the constructor, you put the creation of a button and a click it action. You see, Button it's a class. I created a, I created a variable of type Button, which I call Button. And when I use the word new, I instantiate, I say to the compiler to create uh this class. And I say this class will have this um attributes to put to it. At the same time, I go to Button property called Click It, which is an event handler. And they say that when the, when the action of click, of being clicked, the click it, it's executed, execute this code, also execute this code. Just a minute. Um, let me finish this. When you compile and when you compile and deploy the new version of this app, when you compile, when you compile and deploy the new version of this app, a button appears on the screen. You compile, remember, compile. When you compile code, you transform these human readable letters, words, code in binaries. Binaries, it's stuff that the computer, the computer you are using reads. The computer doesn't read it. The computer reads binaries. So when you compile and deploy, deploy it to make the code become executable. Can be Windows executable, can be Android executable, can be from any platform. When you compile and deploy the new version of this app, a button appears on the screen. Pressing it navigates to Hello XAML page. You can navigate back. You can navigate back to main page. You can navigate back to main page using, you can navigate back to main page using the navigation bar that appears on each platform. Um, in XAML, there was this um, the back button that appears on the screen. Sometimes you you use like Android and iPhone. Um, you have the back button in those two platforms. So we don't need to depend on a back button that appears on the screen. An alternative, an alternative to this navigation model is to use .NET Maui Shell. For more information, see .NET Maui Shell Overview, that you'll be seeing there. XAML and Code Interactions, the child of, the child of most content. Just a minute here. You should see stuff. Let me see. XAML and Code Interactions. Um, before I continue, just to explain to whoever is any day here this year and if XAML and Maui is being um still being used as a programming language and framework and framework. Uh, I always try to explain more in depth uh what is happening behind the simple code you are seeing here. Because because when I began to learn code, everything was uh, when I learned it the first time, I didn't have a web page to teach me this those things. I had books, books. And even in the books, the way things were explained was something difficult because they they began to explain things like I already know some stuff before. I already know that code becomes binaries, that the 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 stim, the electric, electric simulations make things happen in the computer and the computer architecture threads and many, many stuffs uh were were expected from the person who was simply reading to learn how to code. Nowadays, it's more easily because you have many videos showing how to do uh um the programming and showing which IDA is should be used, how to install this IDA and everything else. It's more, much more easy nowadays to learn programming. But in the past was not. You need to really sit down and read a book. And normally a book that doesn't, doesn't know how to explain, to explain even the basics. So you needed to know much more things to just make a simple program. I can assure all of you that, which why I explain things in depth, in depth here. XAML and Code Interactions. The child interactions, the child of most content pages, the child of most content page derives XAML and Code Interactions. The child of most content page derives, the child, the child of most content page derives is a layout such as Stack Layout or a grid, and the layout can, and the layout can contain multiple children. In XAML, these parent-child relationships are established with normal XAML hierarchy. As you can see, people, we are inside the the class XAML Plus Code Page. This is the class. Inside this class, it's open a class named Stack Layout. Inside the Stack Layout class, it's open um and instantiated a class named Slider and a class named Label and a class named Button. Each one with its own properties and data being attributed to them. The uh the way XAML is written, you can understand what is inside what. So you can understand the Slider and Label button are inside the Stack Layout and the Stack Layout is inside XAML, XAML Plus Code Page. The this XAML file is syntactically complete and produce the following UI. A slider, a label, a button. Look here, we have a class Button called Button. We have seen this class here. I can, I can, inside the C#, the C# class main page, I can call the class Button. This and this are the same. And this are the same. Uh, this is actually what happened when this code is compiled. However, while you can interact with with the Slider and Button, the user interface isn't updated. The Slider should, the Slider should cause the label to display the current value and the Button should do something. Just another minute. Just another minute. However, while you can interact with the Slider and Button, the user interface isn't updated. The Slider should cause the label to display the current value and the button should do something. The value, when I say value, is the value of the Slider. Displaying a Slider value using a label... Displaying a Slider value using a label can be activated entirely in XAML. Displaying a Slider value using a label can be activated entirely in XAML with a data binding. That's important, data binding. However, it's useful to see the code solution first. Even so, handling the button click definitely requires code. This means that code behind the file for XAMLPlusCodePage must contain handlers for the value change event of the Slider and the click it event of the button. These value change and click it are event handlers of these classes. Okay, this is the page. That's the namespace, that's the class initialized. Event on Slider value change. There is the... The habit of putting together with the name of the event handler on something, on click it, on, I don't know the term. Doesn't need to be on and the name of the class that it's been called. Okay? But on value change, on click it. Normally, it's good to do that because the person understands that it's an event handling. It's an habit of doing that. Like a consensus. Well... They create the event handler. A event handler always receives the object which the event happened. The object, of course, is the, in this case, is the Slider and here is the button. So the object, the instantiation of this Slider or this button, it's the reference to this object, it's put here. And after that comes the arguments. So value change event argument, it's a type of values. Event arguments, it's another type of values. So you open... Okay, so when you open, you call. In this case, it's being called ValueLabel. ValueLabel... ValueLabel... dot text, arguments, new value to string, fTree. For some reason... I believe this is a... Variable. This is a variable that comes from the object which is the Slider. And this variable, which I don't know which type it is, it's being called the property text. And this is what it passes. They pick up the value change event arguments, opening up the arguments, looking for a property named new value, and they are transforming, this is a converter, okay, this is a converter, they're converting to string. fTree is an argument to make a specific... Converting to a specific type of string to the text. The button here is, here the object is being called more... More easily, can be more easily seen being called. They call them... No, not that. They create a variable of type Button, named Button. They pass the object to this variable and display alert method, which probably comes from... Which probably comes from... Nowhere. Where does it come from? Funny. There should be a content page here being cited. I don't know why it's not here. But probably this comes from the content page or something that comes inside the hierarchy of content page. Heritage, content page heritage. Well, anyhow... So they are making display alert. That's what's going to be shown. The button labeled plus button text has been clicked. Probably this is a pop-up that appears in the screen. Back in the XAML files... This is a pop-up. Okay, this is a pop-up. This is a pop-up, just to people know. It's something that appears in front of the screen. Look here, pop-ups. Back in XAML file, the Slider and Button tags need to include attributes for the value change and click it events that reference these handlers. The attribute click it is here. The attribute on Slider value changed, the value changed, it's being passed the name of the event handler. Not event handler, the method which will... The method that should be called by the event handler. What does it take? We are almost there. Ah, yeah, back, I'm back. Notice that assigning a handler... Notice that assigning a handler to an event... Assigning a handler to an event... Notice that assigning a handler to an event has the same syntax as assigning a value to a property. He's talking about that. In addition, for the value change event handler of the Slider, to use the label to display the current value, the handler needs to reference that object from code. Therefore, the label needs a name which is specified with the XName attribute. The X prefix of the XName attribute indicates that this attribute is increasing to XAML. The name you assign to the XName attribute has the same rules as C# variable names. For example, it must begin with a letter or underscore and contain no embedded spaces. Okay, we're going to learn to use the name. The value change event handler can now set the label to display the new Slider value which is available from the event arguments. Here, here's the XName, value label. Alternatively, the handler could obtain the Slider object that is generating the event from the sender argument and obtain the value property from that. The sender. The result is that any manipulation of the Slider caused its value to be displayed in the label. In the example above the button, in the example above, the button simulates a response to a click it event by displaying an alert with text of the button. Therefore, the event handler can cast the sender argument. In the example above, the button simulates a response to a click it event by displaying an alert with the text of the button. Therefore, the event handler can cast the sender argument to a button and then access its properties. The object is a father class to almost everything that is used in C# framework, C# language. So you need to convert object to a specific subclass. Which subclass? The Button class. Remember that you need, well, anyways... The onButtonClick method is defined as async because the display alert method is asynchronous and should be prefaced with the await operator. This is something from C#. async and await. Well, we are dealing with C# obviously. async, just to show you, the public modifier is not being exhibited because it is the default modifier. It's a specific type of modifier that allows or not things to be seen by other classes. The async is another modifier that tells that this method should be run in the time separated from the class. The await is a way, the await name is a way to tell, "Do this and come back to this line of code after you finish this." So this code is executed outside of the thread that the class which is, this method is inside. This class ran in a time different, in a thread different than this. This is run in a time, in a thread different from the rest of the class. When await is, when the code is finished to be executed, it comes back here in this line of code and continues down to read the code. Simple as that. The onButton method is defined. A própria meta do botão é definida como asyncaut porque o método display alert é asincrônico e deveria ser prefaceado com o operador await que retorna quando a meta termina. Como eu disse, retorna à mesma linha. Porque esta meta obtém o botão enviando o evento pelo argumento sender, o mesmo handler poderia ser usado para múltiplos botões. Sim. Próximo passo. O XAML é principalmente designado para instância e inicialização de objetos, mas muitas vezes as propriedades devem ser setadas para objetos complexos que não podem ser representadas facilmente como strings XML e às vezes as propriedades definidas por uma classe devem ser setadas em uma classe de filho. Estas duas necessidades requerem as características de sintaxe essenciais do XAML. As características de sintaxe de elementos de propriedade. De elementos de propriedade e adicionar propriedades. Esta é a próxima que veremos. Bem, esta live já é muito longa. Então eu vou... Bem, voltarei mais tarde. Vejo vocês... Ah, antes disso... Vou mostrar na tela. Feito. Provas. Tchau, tchau, pessoal. Vejo vocês na próxima.